Find it out, Mac. Is the bill known to make the official announcement about Halloween? Because we didn't do that yet. Yeah. I.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
My cover meeting of the.
It's all. When is it? Usually Kustin, the thirty first, you'll be thirty first six.
Yes, Brock.
Here.
Colazo, here, DeBouser.
Ford. Frick. Herring. Pratsa. Lancaster. Noel. Smith. Steelman.
Here.
Taylor. Ten present, two option.
Additions or changes to the agenda? You know, one in there. A. Ordinance. Amending chapter seventy eight, four oh five and four sixty will be postponed. We're not going to. The zoning. And. Code. Ordinance at the community development last night, they decided they need a little more time.
No need for his council president.
Move right into, we don't need an executive session as far as I know. Do you have anything?
Not that I'm aware of unless somebody else needs one.
All right. Administration.
Peter, don't forget the extra one we added to admin. The investment.
In your packet, there's one. Additional. Many example. But.
It's you, whatever. Peter, it's you, whatever.
You're waiting.
All right. We advertised the last meeting on ordinance amending the borough management pension plan. Offer a one-time window to benefit active employees with twenty-four or more years of service. Just through discussion?
Um. Some information, just wanted to clarify some things. So I need a little bit more time before I can make an educated. Vote on that. So I was going to make a motion to table it just until next meeting to go over some things.
Are you going to?
There is second. One second.
On a motion to table this motion? No?
Colazo. DeBouser. Ford. Frick. Herring. Pratsa. Lancaster. Noel. Steelman.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Five yes, five no.
Been here for a year, man. This is two years. You've been waiting for this.
So excited. Just stretch first, Mr. Mayor.
You'll have to call an executive session. This is. What?
Ah. I switch, I'm going to switch my vote then. Yeah.
The four, the four noes were Frick, Colazo, Steelman and DeBouser.
They were yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, or yes is the table. I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Okay. Then.
So the motion fails.
On the.
Yes, that's what he said.
Frick and Colazo voted to table the motion. So it's six, four, the motion does not succeed.
That was the motion to table. So now we're voting on the ordinance itself. And yes.
Center back to discussion. Um, I just. Want to make sure I understand. If we, this is for the one-time way to the, the, the people that fall under this specifications can change their. Pension? Yeah.
People to retire.
Is it true? Okay, that's what I couldn't remember and I apologize. My brother just got married. I'm a little frazzled. Where's your brother?
Retired and not to change their pension program, correct?
Okay. So basically we're saying this is an opportunity. To. The, the described individuals that fall under this window to say, I'm done. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on.
If we didn't do this. What are the retired qualifications as far as age and years of service?
And years in sixty-five, ten years of service with age sixty-five.
There was. A level of confusion.
Pension administrator was as a result of. When they realigned the pension, correct?
Clearing up some paperwork from nineteen ninety.
But I can ask versus what was said in executive session. So I don't know. I want to, don't want to step out of what. I should have.
For the employee, that's for sure.
All under this plan. And it's only management. And the next one is for the union and that just goes into cleaning up their. Matching what's in their contract, the CBA, to what the plan says.
I, I apologize. That's, one of the reasons that we had. Uh, thought to type table this is ask some of these questions. I'm not sure what I can ask versus I can't. So I don't want to step out of my, out of what I should say publicly. So.
Using employees' names. I think that's what he's asking. What? When there was a management pension plan?
In nineteen. Nine, nineteen ninety-nine, they split that plan into a management pension plan and a union pension plan. There was people that fell. That didn't fall into the union, that didn't fall into management. So these six people were kind of in limbo. The, again, they didn't fall in management, they didn't fall into union. So we needed to create, they needed to put them somewhere. So they created a management B plan. There was an A plan and a B plan. They put them into a B plan.
Okay.
Um discrepancies with. Who went into the A plan and who went into a B plan. And that's why we're here today.
This is to clean up a little bit of. No one in this room did this paperwork. It was a long time ago. So we're trying to clarify some things. That's the spirit of this.
If you're giving them an opportunity to retire now, but they don't want to retire or vice versa, how does that affect them? Or do they still have the option to continue?
They, they have the option to then go into, then they would just fall under the management pension plan, which is the ten years with sixty-five. So if they don't take this window, then they just. They have the ten years with sixty-five.
Just to refresh my memory. Was there a different, what is the main difference between the management A and management B?
Twenty-five years of service. And B was ten years with sixty-five or ten years.
Specs of the plan are identical. It's just the timing of when they could retire. And that's all we're addressing here.
That, that A plan was. Negotiated, I guess, for a certain group of management people at that time. I think there was nine of them at the time. That was a negotiation that was held between that management group and.
So does this? Does this change our liability for anything? Is there going to be any repercussions for anything? Or we're good to go? This is all good. This is beneficial.
It's just the plan. It's just.
That's, that's my main question is how do we protect council? How do we protect the borough? How do we protect the employees of the borough? All that.
I, I think this is trying to protect. The borough. Based on the recommendation of our pension administrators and the pension lawyers, this was a way to kind of fix.
Sure. Thank you.
And, and make it so that. The employees that fell under these parameters. You know, as she said, what was it? Fif- age fifty with twenty-five years of service. So if you thought you were in plan A all along, and you're saying, I can retire at age fifty if I have twenty-five years. Okay? And then you realize, oh no, I have to work till I'm sixty-five? Doesn't matter how many years, as long as I have ten, I gotta stick till I'm sixty-five. That, that's. What this is trying to fix.
Versus just being definitive as to which retirement plan they're in.
I don't think it's have to retire is when they should retire.
Pick this window. If you, it's just like if you had the option, this is a one-time window of opportunity. You want to take it, you take it. If you don't take it, then you're staying, you're working. Just like they're, the people that. The police have the same thing. If they hit twenty-five and fifty, they have an option to retire. If they don't want to retire, they don't have to.
No, it, it, the, the, this doesn't change the program. This is just saying.
Now or you're here till you're sixty-five? Versus someone who could retire at fifty-five or fifty-six or fifty-seven?
Your, your, years of service, but it doesn't change the calculation of how your pension's calculated. It doesn't change how your pension is.
If you're, and if you can retire in two months' time, God bless you, you're in a better spot than I am. But if you told me that I could retire two months from now, I couldn't.
And that's up to the, that's, again, we had people that was able to retire with, they went out with the twenty and fifty.
And fifty, one? Right, that's my question.
I think the window is the problem that we're questioning. Yeah, this is, I mean, this is what was on the table was the window.
Now, this is the motion. You know, certainly, I mean, could council, and I'm not advocating you do this. This is based on what our pension lawyers and our pension administrators recommended. Could you simply say that? This category of employees were going to move into A?
That's not what the actuary, that's not what they, that's not what we were, the pension, that's not what they recommended.
Because we asked that question as well. And they're not recommending that because then that could open us up to liability with past employees.
These clarifications, I appreciate it.
Part read at the end before. Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Chooses not to exercise the window. Okay, well, so be it. I mean, they can retire at any time. They just take a penalty. Right, Nicole? And it's a significant, I mean, it's not, it's. Yeah, maybe, but. We can at least say we tried to avert some of those.
Is there more discussion? Yes, it's an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Colazo. DeBouser.
Ford.
Yes.
Frick. Yes. Eric. Yes.
Pratsa. Lancaster. Noel. Smith. Steelman.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries. And we have a similar motion. Regarding. The non-management pension plan. Offer a one-time only retirement window. This one.
The, the intent of this is to bring it in line with what was collectively bargained with the union.
Did that window in the, the agreement. Yeah, do the ordinance when we did the contract.
Brock.
Yes.
DeBouser. Ford.
Yes.
Frick.
Eric. Yes.
Lancaster. Noel. Smith. Steelman. Taylor. Ten yes.
In addition to that. We have. The investment policy statement from our. Managers. Most ended up. Today. This was discussed and approved at the pension committee meeting. The administration committee. Represents the council on that. And two-thirds of us were there. And we both proved it. So. I'm bringing this forth as a, as a motion. From the committee. But it's going to require a second since we did not. We were not convened as the committee and we didn't vote on it. In second. Are there? Questions about this? I know it's been a lot to have read and digested.
Let him get a good picture. Let him get a good picture of crashing council.
Scout's a bloodhound.
And he's getting big.
I know.
He'll get a slub all over you.
He's okay.
That's great.
None of us are running, running in here.
Yes.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Frick. Eric, yes.
Yes.
Steelman.
Yes.
Taylor. Ten yes.
We talked about budget, but we didn't do anything definitive. Next meeting. So. Mini development.
Yesterday, so usually we save the main highlights for the next meeting, but we do have. Cause we took out the second one, correct? That's the one, the chapter seventy revision that we're not doing right, Peter? Okay, so the, uh, we just have one basic. Thing we want to update the steering committee for the comprehensive plans. Official member list. Yeah, I did, I don't have the names. I'm sorry. It's in here somewhere, but I don't. Not sure who the other one was. I apologize. They are in the packet though, if you care to review them. And so the.
If we approve the members of the.
So we don't need a second. Uh, the motion is to. My gosh, I moved to approve the updated member list for the comprehensive, comprehensive plan steering committee.
So the two people who were. On the, Mel and Zach.
I do not recall the second name. I'm sorry. And I don't have it in front of me. There you go.
Motion carries.
Be development. I need to bring my notes down. I forgot.
Anything from Shaitri? Manager.
Leaf pickup started this week, so if anybody wants to get their leaves rigged up, the borough would be around to pick them up. Um, we did get notified that there will be some night painting, paving this week on Thursday from South Seventh Street from Philly to the sheets. That is Pendott project doing that. So they're going to start at six P M. to six A M. So just be aware of a night paving. Um, I did, we're still continuing with the building project. We're set to November first to put it out for bid. Um, that's still on track. Meeting today, and I know the, the mayor might talk a little bit about this too. We're continuing with Commissioner Key to form this. Emergency Authority Board. And that's still in the process, process. They're going to try to be working over the next couple of months. Getting everything put together. There'll probably be an ordinance brought to Borough Council in, you know, the near future here to. Form this authority once we get all the information. Um, right now there's a steering committee and the mayor can kind of talk about that because he's on that steering committee. And to move forward with a countywide. Emergency Authority. So it's a good thing. Um, some good information we got from the meeting. So, uh, and that's all I really have.
On a time. Uh, talked about. I don't remember how it's exactly phrased. Audit is the word that comes to mind. Uh, we went through it with the police department where someone came in and basically looked at things. We had an outside entity come give an evaluation. Maybe that's a better word. We can be borough wide. And. I guess I, I haven't heard anything, so.
So expensive. So we can do that, but we can't do what we did with the police. It was, it was very expensive. What was it? Fifty thousand, twenty-five? Fifty thousand.
Everything or is that just, that's just what we paid for the. Investigation of, and I, you know, you know, the numbers better than I, because they sent them to you, but.
The group that would have been conducting that would have been the same group that did the police department or were you looking at someone different?
Someone else because of the cost. And then there was discussion about putting it into next budget year. Because of how much you spent this year. On the police investigation.
Do we have a more definitive timeline than twenty twenty-four?
I would need. Recommendations on who to. Guess we can ask that, those people. I.
Look more along the. Human resources. Side rather than. More of a legal investigative team. You know, so, I mean, I, I think that's probably where I would look. To try to get a lesser cost.
Okay, so how do we? How would we begin that process? Now, I understand it might need to be after the beginning of the year, but. We still have to find people and vet people and choose people. And I mean, there's a process. It's not like we can just call them on January second, they start January third. And so.
We, we could put on, if you choose. We can do it as an RFP.
Admin.
And through admin committee and see if you put together an RFP. So that we can put out what the scope of what you're looking for is. And then we can put it out and see if anybody takes.
Have we even decided to even do that? Remember we were tabling it until next year anyhow.
Well, because of the cost.
Exactly, because the cost was too high and we never even decided to go forward with it. So we even have to. When we talked about how expensive it was. Was it when we defined it? Was it when we decided it was too expensive and that's why we tabled it until next year?
I would have to look back through the records.
Getting some quotes would give us a better idea if we're reporting or not.
It's probably worth doing. Just, I mean. Finding the right price point is important, but I think it's probably, I would, I would say it's worth doing. And I guess my question is, in terms of process. Do we, because we're pushing into next budget year, do we need to actually put it in the budget or is it within the range of things that kind of fall into the? The budget dust category?
Services, yeah.
Yes, because if it's going to be, if, since we're working on our, our budget for twenty twenty-four at this point, it would make sense to include it as a, either, you know, within, within the existing line item. So that we have the money to do it, at least some, some chunk of money.
Administration committee, which deals with personnel issues. To come up with an RFP. And. Into what's available and what's going to cost.
So we would need that no matter what, because it's changing what we originally talked about regardless of what may have happened in between. So we would need that no matter what, because it's changing what we originally talked about, regardless of what may have happened in between.
Actual services, you do not need to put it out for bid or to do an R F P. Best practice would tell you you're spending tax dollars, put it out for an R F P. Now, you do not need to accept the lowest bidder if you feel they're not qualified to do what you're asking them to do. Sense to do it as an, look, the last one that we did, we got quotes from a couple of different law firms. And I presented those to you and we acted because we all felt that there was a sense of urgency there. Given, given the allegations that were made. Okay, this I think is more, uh, I. I, I don't want to undersell anything. This is more along the lines of, uh, let's see what's going on in the inter-management, in the inner workings of our borough. Let's make sure we're doing things as we want to do them and that is being done under best practices in a professional manner. Is that a fair statement? Is that my encapsulating it? Because look, no matter what entity you're gonna have, you're always gonna have a few apples that aren't happy. I don't care where you work. You're gonna have people that love their jobs, you're gonna have people that hate their jobs, and you're gonna have people that just come and they know they're getting paid every two weeks. And they're just gonna do their job. I mean, that's human nature.
Well, you get offered the level of protection and backup to the management. Right? I mean, they have some professional feedback in that case and we may. And I think that only helps the borough.
Right, and to have a. Human resource, a human resource professional that can do that for you can give, can give that level of feedback that, you know. I think we're asking for a different scope of investigation or a different scope of inquiry than we did with the other.
If I may, uh, I think this is important also because uh, with the prior borough manager that we had, there was a lot of. There was a lot of problems and, and I'd like to see where we stand now that we've made changes. I think we've made positive changes. But I think it's important for council to see, uh, have those changes where they the right things, because our prior manager really upset a lot of people.
But it's something that we should start this evening, like November, December, or wait until the new council committees are formed or whatever we decide. Being that it would end up with admin. So you've got three admin versus possibly eight admin.
We, we take marching orders. If you say to put an R F P together through your current administrative committee. Process.
We're putting it to admin, you guys to start the process, get an idea of what our scope of what we're looking for, what to accomplish.
In, in any case, whatever admin came up with would, would come back to council. The new council at the beginning of the year before any money was spent.
You report, it was not in the first of the month due to the time, uh, that the meeting fell. There wasn't enough time to put together those statistics. So, uh, generally, a very similar, uh, call volume and professional output, uh, for the month of September. I'm always happy to answer any questions if there are about that document. I did want to provide an after-action review of Homecoming, uh, for council. And, um, I'll save that for the, the end, if that's okay, and just advise you that this weekend, there is a Love of Life five K run walk on Saturday that will be occurring. Uh, it starts on Eighth Street and it travels the traditional route through I U P campus to Mac Park and back. That's a standard event that's been occurring for years that benefits Indiana Regional Medical Center. We also, uh, received and I approved today an application for the Veterans Day Parade to occur within Indiana Borough on November eleventh. I know that is a Saturday this year. And, uh, also today received an application and, uh, approved the Wonderful Life Parade. That was today. Both Wonderful Life Parade and the Veterans Day Parade have to go to Pendot for approval. They're both inside an eight-week window that Pendot likes, so this would be a little touch and go to get those, the, the main highway, uh, closed. But Pendot's a great partner and I don't anticipate that there's gonna be too much difficulty. So Love of Life five K, Veterans Day Parade, Wonderful Life Festival, that should round out the larger special events for this year. As a follow-up to Homecoming, I, I created a memo for, uh, Mayor Simmons and I was going to give it in full to Public Safety tomorrow or, excuse me, Thursday. But I would like to read the after-action review to full council so that you have a synopsis of the weekend. And just so you know, um, this year, I U P Homecoming, your police department handled one hundred and fifty calls for service. And that was one hundred and fifty calls for service from Thursday at seven A M. to Sunday at seven P M. And for, for some perspective, in twenty twenty two, we handled one hundred and thirty-five calls for service. In twenty twenty one, we handled one hundred and thirty-two. And in twenty nineteen, we handled two hundred and eighteen. So we're not back to twenty nineteen numbers, but we are increasing, uh, from. We have been increasing each year, calls for service. So here is the after-action review. As an Indiana community, we were not immune from the terrible act of targeted violence that will forever remain I U P Homecoming history. In planning for every special event as a collective first responder community, we recognize the ever-present danger that exists and work tirelessly to proactively prevent harm and protect everyone, everywhere, and at all times. The mass shooting in White Township demonstrated a worst-case scenario must remind us all that we're not immune from targeted violence. But also that we have a first responder community that will always run into danger and toward the violence to protect the lives of our family, friends, neighbors, and total strangers. In addition to police officers, members of Citizens Ambulance Service and Indiana Fire Association responded into the danger to save lives and are always invaluable partners to every public safety effort. My sympathies go to all who were victims of weekend violence and my appreciation goes to every first responder. As your chief of police, I continue to support Indiana Borough's effort to promote, maintain peace, safety, and comfort in advance of, during, and, uh, in advance of and during I U P's Homecoming weekend. An incredible amount of preparation, planning, and partnership is required to execute community safety objectives when we experience such large influxes of visitors and celebratory activity. My sincerest thanks are relayed to Mayor Simmons, Lieutenant Slavinsky, Sergeant Rayco, and Sergeant Stifler, who implemented and executed our weekend event operational plan. I commend the men and women of I B P D for their professional efforts throughout the weekend. Additionally, I want to thank manager Seepus and members of our Public Works Parking and Code Departments for their significant partnership roles that weekend. The Blairsville Borough Police Department was instrumental in the Homecoming Parade-related activities and the Indiana County Sheriff's Department was vital in creating omnipresence and support for our mission on Friday and Saturday night. As always, members of the State Police and the I U P Police Department play significant roles in everyone's safety and support. I commend every member of P S P Sheriff's Department, I U P Police Department for their response and life-saving efforts at the community center. As we faced a sleepless weekend, I continued to be struck by the love demonstrated by Indiana Summit Church as they prepared warm meals and fellowship opportunities for all first responders throughout the weekend. Their outreach enhanced the wellness and morale of all members and serves as a constant reminder of our community's love and support. Finally, I recognize and commend our I U P student residents for their overwhelmingly respectful response to weekend activity. Our mission is to enhance quality of life of our citizens with a focus on peace, safety, and comfort while we demonstrate honor, integrity, and respect. I trust all members of council will find that our actions were in line with that mission as we navigated an active weekend. As I've said many times, I remain honored and humbled to lead your police department and to serve with the men and women of your Indiana Borough Police. And that is the after-action review of the weekend. Full report will be given to Public Safety Committee on Thursday.
Are there questions for the chief?
Do we also get like a pretty big outpouring of support for Chevy Chase? And I think local restaurants volunteer to bring like Meals on Wheels to a separate location or something?
I don't have those specific details, but I do hear from time to time on the radio and through other announcements that there are a lot of efforts going on through town. I think that there's a fill-the-bust for the Chevy Chase Community Center that will be occurring this weekend or the, the next day or two. Sorry, I don't have a report. I don't have a report on the community outreach.
Who is Chevy Chase? Some of you may or may not know as a commercial kitchen where they Meals on Wheels collapsed at the beginning of COVID, another group took over and they prepare all the meals at the Chase. They couldn't do that because the investigation, so there were individuals in restaurants. I know our one family restaurant stepped in and yesterday they had fried rice with chicken and, and a spring roll delivered to seniors. And the meals went on seamlessly because of the outpouring and, and commitment to, uh, residents in both Indiana Borough, Indiana, uh, White Township, and Indiana County in general. I mean, we live in a really good community for that. We're very fortunate.
I know that the, um. Area Agency on Aging, um, why am I drawing a blank? It's what it's called. I'm on the board. I'm on Agent Services Board and I couldn't remember the name. That's Sunday and Monday, so, so that that would be seamless.
Meals did not miss a meal.
Right.
Because a lot of people we know depend on these and, and, uh, that was, that was a good thing that, that we saw. So.
Questions for the chief?
It might not even be relevant maybe for Thursday, but we have a bigger audience now. All the paving that was done, not so much in the borough on Philadelphia Street, these super black roads. Has anybody been noticing that at night in the rain especially, there is a very dangerous glare where you can't even see what side of the road you're on? I know that it's over by the Kovalchik and I know that it's outside.
I haven't, I haven't heard that yet, but that doesn't mean that it's not existing.
That's just the first, they have to come back and pave that.
So are they gonna make the lines?
Yes, they gotta come back and actually paint it and do the line, like actually put the paving on and do the lines, yeah.
You can see the reflection of every light everywhere and it's like just a globe.
They still have to put the paving on.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
I really don't have much to report, uh, working with manager Seepus, working, uh, on various projects, uh, that we have coming down the pipe. I'm hopeful that we will have something to present to you with the police contract at the next meeting.
Questions for the solicitor? Mail addressed to the council, and since that's everybody. One is simply the newsletter from the Alice Ball House. It's here available if anybody doesn't get it themselves and would like to see it. There it is. Archaby Basilica. Attending, afraid I am not a Catholic. I spent three years teaching at a Catholic college and was required to go to Mass so often that I think I've had my filth, I mean, I've had my share. And we also have an invitation from the N double A C P to their annual thirty-sixth annual Freedom Fund banquet from five thirty to eight thirty at the Indiana Country Club. Where awards are presented and so forth, and all the information is here if anyone would like to look at it. For their role in quick response to the events that happened at Chevy Chase. And I want to thank the whole community for coming together in a very respectful vigil. I think Councilwoman Taylor organized it in front of the courthouse, um, to those who were affected. Meeting which Kyle put together as usual, and we heard about all the things that are going on. Really? Meeting. A going over of events from Homecoming, which I think the chief pretty much summed up. And Don and I also attended the the how many-eth annual?
Six.
Six?
Sixth annual.
Sixth annual Sustainable, Indiana County Sustainable Economic Development Summit at the K C A C. I was a little disappointed that with all the good things that were talked about, there were a series of very good presentations. Thought that was missing, but that was just me.
A show of hands, how many people here were born after nineteen sixty-three? Okay. In nineteen sixty-three, uh, I was, uh, tobogganing out at the College Lodge. And we were coming down on the last run and a car pulled in and I was hit by a car. Okay, so my head's bleeding, guy in front of me has a broken leg. We're laying there, call an ambulance. Okay, called an ambulance. A hearse showed up. Yeah. And that's how we were transported to the hospital in nineteen sixty-three. Now you know why I asked. Because then, uh, the community got together and was able to, to, uh, start and support an ambulance service, which you know today is Citizens Ambulance. And, uh, they've done a really good job over the years, but funding has become a real issue. There's no question about it. It's not unique to here. It's the way it is, not only throughout Pennsylvania, but also through the country. Lot of good, lot of bad reasons why. There's political reasons why it's not funded properly. But nevertheless, we're in a position right now where we have to make a, uh, some kind of an adjustment. So the county commissioners have taken on the idea of, uh, helping the municipalities create an authority. And that authority will be one that eat, all municipalities will have a fee that will go, put, put money into that authority that will then support the ambulance service going forward. So, uh, as the borough manager spoke today, we were at a three-hour meeting over it and just to get it started. And it's gonna take a lot of work. The authority won't really kick in until twenty twenty-five. So that means that where citizens in our case is today is what, uh, will be, uh, how they get through twenty twenty-four. So we've got to work hard to figure out how to keep enough funding going to make that happen. But it's a fact that it's, the counties aren't allowed to do the authority. It has to be done through municipalities. And so obviously, uh, Indiana Borough and White Township always lead the charge when it comes to these kind of things. Other communities, which I talked to today, really look to what we're going to do and are doing in order to make this successful going forward. And coming up with the right amounts, because I think he said there's forty-two thousand households in the county. They have to come up with a, a fee that'll be able to sustain this going forward, starting in twenty twenty-five. So it's gonna require an ordinance that, uh, we'll have to, uh, uh, vote on, but this is gonna take place as the year wears on. So it's a big deal. And, uh, there are a lot of people that, that kind of ignore this and you only ignore it until you need it. And then you say, oh, my goodness, I wish we, you know, so it's very important that we have this going forward. The other thing that'll happen once this authority's up and going, it will start to include fire departments, too. So, uh, and there are a lot of small fire departments throughout the county that are really struggling to keep going. Uh, part of the problem, too, is it's just hard to get volunteers. I mean, uh, when I got in in the seventies, there were three hundred thousand volunteer firemen. Today, there's thirty-eight thousand. So just do the math there. I mean, that's just, uh, what a change. So there are a lot of communities that have had to go to pay. Not, not complete paid firemen, but paid firemen like if at certain times of the day and that kind of thing. So these are all issues going forward. They're very important and, uh, they're gonna require a lot of, uh, uh, of work and, and funding. Yes, yes.
What are the counties in the state of Pennsylvania that in rural Western Pennsylvania, close to us, that have been able to get a successful um, emergency?
That have been able to get a successful um emergency ambulance service authority? Is there an example of a successful one?
By would be in Lancaster County, they've been working to uh uh moving forward with it, so that's uh. The company that's been hired, um. It's Rob Consulting and they are out of Lancaster County and uh they're the people that are really leading the charge to get us up and running. Um, and uh, it's gonna take some time and it's gonna take a lot of creativity, no doubt about it. The county's paying the survey, it doesn't cost the municipality any.
Around this issue in the past is if citizen and uh citizens ambulance collapses. There are places like Indiana Borough that are required by law to provide this service. So it's very important that we have something like this happen countywide, cause we won't be the only community. In the county that will be faced with this issue and and.
Yeah, I agree with you, Don, and there was a report on the news last week. And I forget, it was up in like the. Newcastle and Erie where they had had two of their ambulance services just go out of business, shut down. And now they're talking about wait times, you know, on a cardiac arrest. It, it, it used to be, you know, seven minutes, now it's forty. To get an ambulance there and get to the hospital, you're gonna be dead, I mean, it's just that simple.
So the hearse will be appropriate, the hearse will be appropriate.
Taking you to the hospital, they stop for gas and there are no hurry. Uh, but actually, uh, West Wheatfield, East Wheatfield, they don't have any coverage, there are places right around us that are. And there are other places where citizens has had to dip down to help out, even though we won't, they don't get any kind of funding. From that type of situation. Yes.
Um, I like to ask these questions. So if we, if this, if this goes through. Um, couple, I guess a couple of questions and I assume that there will be some level of oversight, um, if there. How do I answer this? Sets the fee, I guess is probably the simplest thing to say.
The authority sets the fee, that's what we're trying to create is an authority so that they could set the fee based upon.
Bill, because I'm not in the inner workings, but is it similar to, you know, right now we have that tax authority? Remember they created that. And every municipality has membership in that and you know. I think that's probably, I don't wanna say the exact model, but that's probably gonna be something that's gonna look like every minute. Probably is gonna have a seat at the table in this, depending on size, it may not be an equal seat at the table. But it could be.
It's a fee, they wanna make sure this stipulates difference. So the point is, all municipalities have to provide some type of service. The point is, what's the level of service? Right now, the service that we get from citizens is a very high level because they're very good at what they do with paramedics and E M Ts and so on. And their timing, their time is good, ten minutes, you know, you try to, try to get there in ten minutes or less. But you could have uh a pickup truck with one guy go and do it and say, well, that's the only. Only thing we can afford to do right now, you never wanna get to that point, you never wanna let this organization go down because once it's down. To recreate it again would probably be impossible. Yes.
To continue the, this, the kind of uh thought process here. I guess more what I meant was, how do they land on a dollar amount? How often does that change? And is that gonna be similar to like the sewage fee or to where every home has the same, is that the general spirit of it? Okay, um, and I guess then my question is. So the, I don't, I'm not terribly familiar with authorities, so forgive me. So basically they would reevaluate every year, is that how that works? Right, and say this year, based on projection budget.
Change, yeah.
Last, I guess, sort of, sort of the question here is. Where they are is not where they would like to be in an ideal. I always use Dead Uncle Ted, if Dead Uncle Ted left them twenty-seven million dollars, right? They would buy ambulances and outfit people and hire to a standard they would like. So are we, is this aimed at getting them where they would like to be or is this aimed at keeping them where they are?
Keeping them where they are is, is real good, to be honest with you right now, they don't have any debt. They have ambulances, they have two buildings and actually more than two, two right here. Uh, and then there are other satellite offices, some that are rented. But it's to help to sustain it. Um, and probably enhance it to some degree because they've had to kind of close in a little bit more, which means. They, the responses a little bit further than what they'd like to be in some areas.
We email and the phone call, we can say that this is working towards. Not only maintaining, but actually improving service in our community and throughout the communities.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I, I wouldn't knock the fact that we're getting good service now because we are. That's very important, but uh, yeah, it, it, and I think we've done a pretty good job here in Indiana Borough. As far as police, fire and EMS and public safety because we've been able to incorporate help. From all three at certain times and you'll find, uh, you call an ambulance and you live in Indiana Borough. The first person to show up is gonna be the police department. And they assess the situation, they make sure that the ambulance has a place to pull in. And uh, whatever they can do immediately, they'll do that before the ambulance get there, they do the same thing with fires. So uh, that's a big deal, there's no question about it. And and like I say, other communities are gonna, you look at us to model. What we're doing, so we've got to get real good at it so we can then show people that this is the right way to go. Pretty important, it's real important, it's a matter of fact, public safety is a big deal. So I'll keep you up to date, this is gonna take a lot of time, a lot of effort and uh, we'll, we'll keep after it for sure.
Citizens is they've got, there's sort of citizens that we see, which is the ambulances and the space and then they have. They have a management, they better have a management entity that's a separate entity, is that gonna remain the structure?
Yeah, yeah, the, the board that I'm on is the nonprofit board, Citizens Ambulance. And then A S M C is the managing company, so twice a month, the nonprofit. Funds the expenses that are incurred by, by the managing company because all of the uh employees work for them. Okay, the uh five oh one C three, the, the uh board itself, they own the buildings, they own the. Trucks and that are the uh ambulances and that type of thing, that's the division, uh, one's managing versus uh. One that's the nonprofit, so when you're making contributions, it goes to the, the board, five oh one C three.
Yeah, so yeah, that's, that, that is my recollection is, but is that, is the, I mean, we're kind of down the line here a ways, but. Um, with this change to an authority, would there be a change to that structure?
It'll definitely be looked at very closely, yeah. Can I say it'll actually change, I don't know yet, it may end up being exactly, continue to be the right thing to do. But maybe there'll be an enhanced idea that comes up that can help with that, but there, all the employees uh work for A S M C. So, yes.
You reminded me Ben, um, did we ever get an answer from that management group? Peter, we were asking about how much time, what were we asking about, their salary or how much profit, remember? You know?
That was a sneaking point, asking for money, but they came up with something that made us.
And this is all gonna be assessed with the uh, uh, building of the authority, yeah. We're, we're gonna go through all that for sure, so that, so that's, it, it, it's, it's important, so we'll keep after it for sure. Yes, I have another important thing I have to do, I have to tell you that uh we're gonna be celebrating uh Halloween on. Uh, uh, October thirty-first from six to eight P M, I almost forgot.
Well, there were people here ready to remind you.
Yeah, we did.
I know from talking to Citizens Ambulance, you, you need to know that uh. Uh, with the uh episode that took place up at Chevy Chase, uh, our borough policemen were like the first ones on the scene. And they were providing tourniquets and, and actually carrying people to the ambulances, that kind of stuff, that's a big deal.
If I may add to uh, one of the things that was mentioned in meetings that I've been in that because we have. Public safety, the police, the E M Ts, the fire to work together, this went off. As best as could be expected for a tragedy, within thirty minutes, they already had a lifelighted person. Leaving the Chevy Chase area and in, in its save lives. Having this type of cooperation, so uh, it, it's real important and it was a tragedy that it, it had to happen. Um, but uh. Way everybody responded was the way we had hoped when we started getting all the groups to sit down and talk. And work together, they already know each other, uh. You know, as soon as it happened, there were calls going out, the hospital was notified within minutes that there's this happen, this happened to be ready. Everybody was, the wheels just went into motion and uh, and it really did save lives.
I have one more thing, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to take up all this time. Uh, the, there was a boroughs convention up in Erie this past weekend. And the chief and Jeff Hoag and Mike Clausen with the Axel and Scout. All went up and explained our program of. You know, our dogs and what they do and they did a very nice job and, and believe me, the, the, the people that were there. Actually, it was probably the best one of all the group things, but I know I'm prejudiced, but it's. But, but the point is that the, what the, the comfort dogs and, and, and those types of things. That's a big, that's a big deal and the other municipalities were very interested in, and I'm telling you, the chief and, and our guys did a real nice job. Thank you, thank you.
If that's all, is there any old business to come before us?
Realignment?
I have something to.
Then we all forgot about it, um, Gerald had sent something in, I had sent something in, there's the original, the case he had worked on, so there are several options. That given this plethora of time, I'm sure lots of people have detailed feedback to give. Uh, concerning these choices, trying to maybe uh hash out what next year might look like. And so I happen to have the one that I typed up, pulled up, I don't know. Here unfortunately, um, did everyone have a chance or should you, would you like me to read what I had written?
This is, you gave it to us when?
Uh, before the last. Meeting, it was right before the last meeting, okay. Gerald sent it, reminded me to send mine, um, we were both within two hours, I think, of the beginning of the meeting, so it was very, very eleventh hour. But we didn't talk about it anyway, so. It might have even been in response to the uh agenda for the meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Like as a reply to, if you're looking for it. Okay, so prior, uh, I don't remember what Gerald looked like, quite frankly, I feel like it basically stayed this as is.
Is, but the vice president and president attend a lot more meetings, basically, six meetings.
Resigned council early. Let me just briefly read mine, it's not terribly long. Would that be beneficial or how do we wanna proceed, cause we do need to talk.
They're on the table in front of us, so that would be a way to go, since we don't have it in writing.
It was. It was a reply to Gerald, which I believe is a reply to the agenda.
Have a date for it?
October third. Yeah. That's the last message in that thread.
It's a document attached to his.
Was a response to the council packet for. Yeah. Forwarded to you.
Call the council.
I know, I can read it real briefly, yeah. Yeah, it's the same, first meeting would be the same as we've been doing. Nothing really changed there, then I had the second Tuesday at five P M, the planning commission and then at seven P M on that Tuesday. Admin to have a combined meeting. Uh, feedback we got wasn't. Because it's a committee, there wouldn't be any extra staff there, so anyone, if they had to come to the committee meetings normally, then they would still come to this. But there wouldn't necessarily be like the same structure as a full meeting, it's basically a big committee. The meeting, that'd be the idea, the third Thursday, excuse me, third Tuesday, um, five P M would be Shade Tree. Um, and then seven P M, Public Works, Public Safety, uh, would be combined meeting with everyone there. Um. If we need, I, I put on here, like if we needed, if we felt really strongly, we needed two separate declared voting meetings, I believe we have to post that, is that correct? Um, then that would be the suggested second one, um, again, not putting extra burden on. Uh, the staff to be here, they're still only gonna be here for, in theory, the same number of meetings, uh. Yeah, and, and I put a little blurb on there, I mean, I think we would have to be, you know, and I think we're getting better at that, the last couple of meetings, quite frankly. Really strongly adhering to the agenda, um, if we have to, if something needs more discussion, put it at the end of the meeting. Or, you know, carry it on to uh the, I did down, kick it down the road, if you will. Um, we basically swing back around, stay to the agenda tight, if things need more discussion. Bring it up at the end of the meeting kind of thing. Um, cause often if you're, give some space, I am speaking from personal experience, if you give me a little space from a topic, sometimes I start thinking about something else. And suddenly it's not quite so important to ask that last question. Uh, and so I, I think that would be a way to help minimize these from getting extraordinarily long. Which I know is a concern, putting these, some of these together, um, I happen to parent community development and admin, um, and then public works and public safety. It doesn't have to be that way, it was kind of random, you know, there's not really a rhyme or reason to that, just they had, two of them had to go together, so those are the ones I pick. Um. In my head at least, it does minimize the burden on staff, um, and maximizes the information for council. That to me is a big deal, I don't want our staff to not feel like we at least care about their downtime and. I personally like to have as much information available, in this case with three evenings. In a month, I can attend planning commission, community development admin, Shade Tree, Public Works, Public Safety and a regular council meeting, and I'm only giving them three evenings. That's a lot, I know there's other things out there, zoning boards, there's things like that, um. And, but that does give a large amount of information, yes, long evening, but still only three.
Can meetings only be two hours and then we have to make an? Not, okay. It's not an official rule.
Yeah, we've had to vote to extend past nine o'clock.
Well, I thought we had that, but I couldn't find it anywhere that we had.
I like that rule. I thought we'd make that a rule.
That, all that information and.
Seems like a valid question to me.
Going over, Public Works sometimes goes long, but a lot of it's depending on how many, how much talking the council members do. It has been, yeah, forty-five minutes. So it just depends, you know, on the topics. Admin, sometimes you're busy, sometimes there's not a lot going on. Community development can get long, you know? There's a lot of talk of cats or chickens or anything. It takes a long time to get through that.
My only concern would be starting at five o'clock might be hard for some people to get there at five.
Those are just commissions.
Planning Commission and Shade Tree Commission.
Check, I mean, they, they have regular set, theirs is set. Two, their meetings have been set for years on whatever the. Yeah. We'd have to see if that commission board is, you know, willing to change.
It'll meet at five thirty.
For the record, it, it can still be five thirty. You know what I mean? This isn't something that I chiseled in stone and I'm waiting for our blood oath, you know what I mean? This is just a, a basic outline and if it's as simple as move something to five thirty or okay, switch admin and public safety or something like that. I don't think that's an overly uh. I don't think that makes or breaks this, you know what I mean? This is just a place to begin. That again, I focused on minimizing burden of staff, maximizing available information. Those are my two main points. It's still need to three weekend or three evenings. Lot of information available if we choose to take it. Also doesn't make the president, vice president want to quit. I know, Mr. President, you apparently go to a lot of the meetings, but. You know, having the burden of making it a quorum adds a little bit of pressure that isn't there currently. Yeah.
All standing committees. I go to all of them.
So would we envision this as a committee of less than eight or? Like, would these be committees in the way that we do now? Would there be a chair? I guess that's.
Yes. Yeah, this doesn't speak to that.
I don't know. I'm just.
I mean, I. There's people out here who've been here a lot longer than me. I don't know. I guess none of us have done this specifically, but I mean.
Have a chair appointed by the president. Even though all members of council would be members of both committees. Is that right?
That would be the idea, at least as of now, yeah.
To that.
Five. People at each meeting.
It would appear as just two committees versus four, but I might suggest having four committee chairs. Because the committee chairs serve as a point of contact for, for staff and for the community, et cetera. And someone that you can delegate to who then has to follow through. Um, and so having them, if you're going to keep this for. Committee names, I would, I would keep four committee chairs that just as a person.
Back to meeting, back to back.
But you can gavel out, gavel back in, um, between meetings. That's always fun for somebody.
It is fun. Luke really likes the hammer.
Pat, would we do minutes then? One set of minutes for each meeting or then admin would have a set of minutes, public safety would have a set of minutes? Cause they would.
If, if you're going to gavel out of the meeting, gavel into a meeting, then you would have separate set.
For individuals. That way, and then you, you do, you, you lightning round through one, lightning round through the other.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, as long as you keep minutes. That's the key. You know, if you keep minutes, you gotta keep minutes, you know, and so. Whether it's public safety admin meeting minutes, fine. But you do have to have minutes.
And the way Ben is suggesting with. Four separate chairs is very much like Gerald's. Suggestion of keeping things the way they are now, except. That it.
Produces the meetings by half.
Rather than making the. Three member committees or whatever with the vice president. And president on each one to make up the committee. This makes all of us members, but otherwise it's the same essentially as what we have now.
Half the meetings, yeah.
Right, rather than have a scheduled two hour meeting, you'd have two scheduled one hour meetings. And combining them onto only three days, I think is a fairly distinct, distinctive difference. But yeah, to your point, it does feel a little bit like taking his and mine and sort of making them meet in the middle a little bit is what it feels like. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that personally. I think Ben makes a good point.
You say three days, but I want to see two days here.
The first, the first meeting is the first full Tuesday, standard meeting. Then the second Tuesday.
Each two or the others, okay.
Meetings back to back. Say admin is in a slow month. They only need fifteen minutes and we're going to sit around for forty-five minutes and wait for the next. Perhaps instead of a set start time, it's just. These are at this time, starting one after the other.
Yeah, that, that would make sense.
Members, it should be fun.
Somewhere in there, but otherwise it's.
Okay, yeah.
Down at the beginning, the way it's done now, it would be popular comment on, on matters for both committees, I would assume.
We can also add one at the end if it was pertaining to the second one specifically. But if they want to, you know, if admin was first and then it was community development, for example, and they want to specifically address a community development concern, they could always be welcome to. Catch it at the end of the meeting.
Against how we currently run it where if there's somebody that wants to talk on an issue for longer, we can engage in a longer dialogue. Yeah. And if it gets out of hand, we can always change the rules, but we could maybe leave it less formal.
I mean, isn't what we do now a little bit of a bending of the rule rather than it is the rule? I don't, I'm not against bending of the rule in this instance, but what I mean is if we're trying to set a specific plan. When we want to set it specific and then. Use some discretionary power to allow someone to engage more fully if we want them to. Does that make sense?
But then if we have questions, we ask.
I just want to remind everybody, we will not be in this building next year. Just to keep that in mind too. So our meetings will be held. Somewhere else. Center or we'll have to see what room we have at the. But this building will not be available for any meetings. So the three meetings would work out better.
Opposed to trying this, it's a baby step. So three meetings, not a lot of change.
And I personally am willing to try this. With the ideas, we all, we've never done this before, so I think. Once we start the first few months, January, February, March, we'll probably start tweaking. Uh, some things to, to, to make it more efficient, but I think it's a good start. I really do.
In trying to flesh this out a little bit.
It's like this or somebody can make a motion.
What are we doing? What are we doing with work session for November? Anything? It, it, I think if we have a schedule.
Budget.
Oh, that's right. Of course.
Most, all the budgets have been reviewed in each committee, so.
We have to have this solved. Right away, but it's coming up quick and we're going to be into January.
No, this isn't in ordinance.
On stuff.
You just have to advertise.
So hypothetically, if, if we left here without voting on anything, wrote it up a little bit better. Send it back out again, coming into the next meeting with a more polished version, that could be a version to then.
Vote on and then advertise because we have to.
Then we would have you, I can't remember, is it thirty days we have to notice to advertise or is it half month?
Wow, like the twenty-four hours. To advertise a meeting.
Voting to advertise for something, I'm sorry, not in ordinance, I'm sorry, not in ordinance. We don't have to. Yeah, so then we'd be able to vote at the, at the work session then. And that we were, and then if anything did come up, we have the first meeting in December, if something needed to be polished.
Nicole, you can speak to this. It's cheaper to do one advertisement for all your meetings for the year. Now, if you have to supplement and have a special meeting or a different meeting, and yeah, you have to pay to advertise that. But that's all, I mean, that's the only thing you're talking about here is trying to get that done so she can put the advertisement in. At some point in December, so that, hey, here are all the Indiana Borough meetings for the next year.
It feels like the timeline would match. Rerate this a little more polished, send it back, back out. If we choose so, select at the next meeting. Advertise it. Vote on it during the work session in November.
Does it to vote on it?
To finalize it then?
Advertise, vote on. This is your, and this is your internal working, this is your internal working. Plan. All the advertising is for, is for sunshine purposes.
That gives us time to do it. I guess by the end of the year, let me press it.
Who is going to undertake to write this up?
What I have. And I'll email it out and people feel free to fix whatever grammar I screw up. All right. Have, so.
Is there anything else for old business? I'm glad we got that cleared up. New business.
The old Giant Eagle Express, get go, they broke ground. Dunkin' Donuts. They broke ground.
And they started doing stuff.
I don't move that way very often.
Isn't evening in the stacks this week? Yeah. We should be reminding everyone.
Evening in the stacks at the library.
Yeah.
That's a very good fundraiser.
Yes, yes.
If you've not done that, it's, it's a great fundraiser where. The restaurants and other groups provide hors d'oeuvres and all and there's entertainment. It's a real nice evening.
Come on.
I gotta be in Pittsburgh for a football game. Darn it.
Add two things, but I would like to be last if possible. So if anyone else has anything else to say. Anyone else to say, okay. Um, first thing I want to bring up was, I don't know if anyone heard that Rite Aid went bankrupt. I have no. That. At least strongly that, that our Rite Aid should not be closing is what I was told. So I thought that was good news worth sharing. We're not going to have a big empty building on the far side of the.
Be closing.
I was told it is the busiest in their entire division of five hundred stores. Yeah, of all of the Rite Aids. It is the busiest out of.
It doesn't bode well for Rite Aid at all.
Well, they moved pharmacists from Johnstown. So it actually has more staff now too. Okay. Um, I have one other thing on the new business. So I'm just going to get, get into it with Peter. You okay with me starting? Violation of the code of conduct by a member of this council on September nineteenth during the September work session. During the course of normal discussion. Councilman Taylor was combative and disruptive. The specific moment I want to highlight came at the beginning of a discussion. About the possible new committee structure. When I was interrupted. And when I was asked to not be interrupted, I was insulted. And when I asked her to stop insulting me, she looked at me and stated, well, F you. For section B, subsection one, A, B, and C, this is a clear violation of the code of conduct that this council agreed to follow. Responsibility to call out each other when we have violated the code of conduct and that is what I am doing tonight. Grace. I think that. Having an strict of her committee chair position over these actions. That a, a public censure at this time is not appropriate for this specific situation. And I will not be seeking one at this time. I do hope and pray that we can all learn from, from this and learn to better respect the code of conduct moving forward. Thank you.
Requested to be last, I'm assuming no one else has anything to add. To adjourn?
All right.